2024 Lee County Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Can we start with the roll?
Ben Forster.
Present.
Ellen Smith.
Present.
Emily Pratt.
Present.
And Charles Bachman is not present.
All right, moving on. The approval of the July 17th, 2023 meeting minutes, since we do not have meeting minutes present, I'd entertain a motion to waive the reading of the minutes.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Any old business? Okay, no old business. We'll move on to new business. And I'm assuming most of the crowd here is here for the new business agenda item. Quite a turnout, biggest turnout I've seen at one of these yet. So I'd like to go ahead and do this in an orderly fashion. Manage some expectations here. We're going to start with Alice Hinkle being sworn in to provide testimony and answer questions that are of a factual nature. If anyone has any questions for Alice pertaining to the proposed ordinance, please keep it of a factual nature and reserve opinions and comments until we get to that portion of the meeting. You will have your chance. Do probably have some would like to manage the time well this evening, too. If we start to run long, we want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to speak. We may wind up tabling it to a later meeting. So, moving on to that. Alice. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under penalty of perjury that the testimony you are about to give shall be the truth? Also, if anyone would like to testify this evening, you will have your chance after Alice is through with her testimony. With that, the testimony, you will have a right to be testified, but also be subject to cross-examination and answer questions from the group. And the testimony is not public comment. So that would be things of a factual nature and that type. So if you have opinions and comments and want to state your opinion, that would be best done during the comments section of the meeting.
Ready?
All right.
Good evening. My name is Alice Hinkle. I'm currently the zoning administrator for Lee County. Before us tonight is a petition for tax amendment. Some history surrounding this. Since COVID, the pandemic in 2020, the zoning office has been receiving calls about allowing chickens in the R2 district. Currently, chickens are not allowed in the R2 district. No farm animals are allowed in the R2 district. So what the county is trying to do is extend some of those rights to that R2 district. And because from the pandemic, we saw a rise in the number of people that wanted to be able to raise their own chickens, sustain themselves. So what the goal of the county was to kind of bridge that gap between the Ag District and the R2 District so that some people could have chickens that currently cannot. So, go to the first slide. Couple of things I want to discuss. First off, what is zoning and what is the purpose? Zoning regulates how the land can be utilized. So while you own your land, the county has a code that tells you what you can and cannot do with that land. So that determines what is determined by your zoning district. The purpose of zoning in Lee County is to regulate and control the classification of land uses and the use of land and buildings within the county in order to promote the public health, safety, and welfare of its citizens and to minimize conflict between farming and other land uses. One of the most important things that zoning does do is help minimize conflict between districts. Next slide. In Lee County, there are four zoning districts: agricultural, residential, commercial, and industrial. Those four categories are then broken down into subcategories. Next slide. Under agricultural, we have the Ag 1, which is the rural agricultural district. According to our code, the intent of establishing a rural agricultural district is to allow maximum freedom of operation for bona fide agricultural uses. So bona fide agricultural uses would include the feeding, breeding of livestock, harvesting corn, beans, things of that nature. Next slide. In the R District, which is the residential district, we have R1, which is rural residential district. This is kind of a blend between the agricultural district and the residential district. The lots are larger. They are allowed to have farm animals on these properties, and they tend to be out in rural areas. R2 is single-family residential district. Single-family residential uses, including principal residential uses permitted in the R1 District in subdivisions served by public or community sewer systems. This is typical zoning for a residential subdivision. We also find it in Lee County, since we don't really have a lot of subdivisions, we typically see the R2 District within a mile and a half of existing municipalities, rural subdivisions, and then unincorporated municipalities such as Sablet, Harmon, West Brooklyn, Compton, and Nelson. In the R3, it's a mixed residential use. And the R4 is for multifamily, which allows two or more dwellings within the district. Next slide. In our commercial district, we also have three subcategories. C1 is a neighborhood office and business district. C2 is planned office and business district. And C3 is general business district. Next slide. And our last one is industrial. We have I1, planned industrial district. I2, general industrial district. And I3, heavy industrial district. So today, we are talking about the R2 single-family residential district. So turning to our petition, I would like to state on the record that the notice of this public hearing was published in the Dixon Telegraph on March 15th, 2024, and a certificate of publication is available in the zoning office for public inspection. Above and beyond that, the Lee County zoning office also sent letters to the Village of Nelson, the Village of Harmon, Village of Compton, the Village of West Brooklyn, and the Village of Sablet, as these areas have high concentration of R2 district. Additionally, the zoning office sent out a letter to each of the 22 townships that make up Lee County. All right, so looking at what we are proposing here. First of all, what we are considering is allowing chickens as an accessory use in the R2 single-family district. An accessory use means that there has to be an established principal use on the property before you can have an accessory use. So in that district, essentially, you're looking at a single-family residential home. Maybe a nursing home or childcare facility would meet the requirement of a principal use for the property. So this would prevent anyone from going out and just placing chickens on an empty R2 lot, maybe in a subdivision, maybe not. So they have to have their home established there. We define the terms farm animal and livestock in this proposed text amendment. Fowl is included in both definitions of farm animal and livestock. And so we would be accepting chickens from those definitions to allow for chickens, but no other fowl. So no ducks, no geese, chickens only. The provisions that we have proposed would include it shall be unlawful for any person to own, house, raise, or keep chickens within the R2 single-family residential district unless it is done in compliance with the provision of this subsection. So essentially, it is telling you that you must comply with all of these requirements stated here within the proposed text, or you would be in violation of the code. Number two, no property shall have more than six chickens present at the property at any time. Roosters are not permitted. I've been asked where we got the number six. We actually looked to the City of Dixon, and what they had in place was the number six. That was more or less a starting point for us. Since it had worked for the City of Dixon, that is why we proposed that number. And that is why we're considering that. Paragraph number three. The owner or occupant of any property keeping, housing, or raising chickens in accordance with this subsection 3 shall provide and maintain adequate fencing and/or enclosure sufficient in size and strength to confine the chickens to the property at all times. Fencing must comply with Section 1014, which is fencing of the Lee County Code. What this paragraph is stating is that the chickens must be enclosed in an enclosure at all times. They would not be allowed to roam free. They would not be able to go onto your neighbor's property or down the block. It is your responsibility as a property owner to keep them enclosed and on your property at all times. Paragraph four. All enclosures, including fencing, must be located at least 15 feet away from any property line, must not be placed in any front yards and/or side yards, and must be maintained in a clean and sanitary conditions at all times. So any enclosure or fencing that you place for the purpose of keeping your chickens on your property would have to be set back a minimum of 15 feet from any neighbor's property line. Typically, in the R2 District, the setback is seven feet. So we have added on and gone with what is the setback in the Ag District to give a little bit extra protection to the neighbors. In paragraph five, or actually, let me back up. We also said they must not be placed in the front yards or the side yards of the property. Therefore, chickens would only be able to be placed in the backyard of the property. So essentially, you should not be able to drive by a property and see their chicken enclosure as it would be placed in the rear yard. And must be maintained and clean in sanitary conditions at all times is self-explanatory. Paragraph five. The property shall not be maintained in a manner so as to become a nuisance. Paragraph six. Property shall be maintained in a manner so as to retain residential characteristics. What is meant by this is we don't, while we want you to be able to have the chickens, we're not trying to turn residential neighborhoods into the agricultural district. So if you started bringing like hay bays on your property and it starts looking a little bit like a barnyard, you would be in violation of what we're proposing here tonight. Paragraph seven. Manure, excrement, and waste shall not be allowed to accumulate on the property and must be cleaned up on a regular basis. Paragraph eight. Slattering and processing chickens on the property is prohibited. While we understand that some people might like to raise the chickens for meat, you will have to take it to a processor to have that done, or maybe you know a farmer who will do it for you. But you will not be able to conduct those activities in the R2 District. Paragraph nine. Chickens shall be for personal use only. Sale of chicken byproducts, such as meat and/or eggs, is prohibited. We are not looking to turn the R2 into a commercial district. What we are trying to do is allow people to have chickens for their personal use, for their personal benefit. We're not trying to make it so you can make some money on the side. That is actually allowed in the Ag District. And we're not looking to extend that to the R2 District at this time. Paragraph 10. Except for chickens, no other farm animals and/or livestock shall be housed, raised, or kept in the R2 single-family residential district. Again, farm animals and livestock are currently prohibited in the R2 District. This proposed text would allow you to have a minimum of six chickens on the property. No other farm animals are permitted. Paragraph 11. Should the property become vacant of the accessory use of chickens for a continuous period of 90 days or more, then the property owner or occupant shall be required to remove any enclosure and/or fencing that was placed on the property for the purposes of this subsection. So essentially, if you decide that you are done raising chickens and you remove the chickens from your property, if the chickens are gone for a period of 90 days, continuous days, then you would have to get rid of your chicken coop and your fencing. We do understand that some people might not house them during the winter months, and that's why we have that 90-day exception so that if you do remove them for the winter months, you should be able to do that without being in violation of this code. Paragraph 12. Nothing in the provisions of this subsection 3 shall be deemed a limitation upon any homeowner's agreement, covenant, common interest, community, or other contract between multiple property owners within the county that prohibit or restrict homeowners from owning, housing, raising, or keeping chickens within the R2 single-family district. Excuse me. What this is saying is that if you live in a subdivision and your subdivision has covenants, and those covenants say no farm animals, then no farm animals. This ordinance would not supersede. Subdivisions are allowed to adopt their own covenants, which are typically more restrictive than the code of the county. It is their job, though, to enforce those covenants. So even though this code says that, yes, you can have chickens, you may not be able to do so if the covenants of your subdivision state you cannot. Next section is penalties. Any property owner who does not comply with the subpar paragraphs I through, that should be 12, and no, that's a Scrivener error, under paragraph B of this subsection 3, shall be subject to the following penalties. Number one. Any owner or occupant who violates any of the provisions of this subsection 3 may be required to remove the chickens from the property. Two. The zoning enforcement officer may levy a fine of not more than $500 a day against any person, firm, or corporation, their agents, employees, or contractors who violate, disobey, omit, neglect, or refuse to comply with, or who resist enforcement of this title, and each day a violation continues shall constitute a separate fine. The zoning enforcement officer may also elect to refer any such violations to the state's attorneys for prosecution as a misdemeanor punishable by imprisonment of not more than six months, the imposition of fines or bold. So first off, the goal, when my office deals with a zoning violation, the goal of my office is compliance. We're not looking to go out and, you know, come down hard on somebody because they may not have known that they were even violating the code. So first and foremost, if my office were to get a complaint about a potential chicken violation, the first thing we would do is reach out to that owner and investigate whether there is a potential complaint. We would then work with that owner to come into compliance, if at all possible. If the owner was resistant or is refusing to work with the county, then we would ask them to remove the chickens from their property. If it goes beyond that and they don't remove the chickens from their property, and this turns into, you know, something my office has to deal with, potentially the state's attorney's office has to deal with, then we would potentially be looking at a fine to recoup some of the time, you know, that we have spent trying to remedy the violation. We are not looking to put a $500 a day fine on anyone who's in violation. That would be outlandish. Typically, a fine would be in line with the violation. So, you know, if there is a chicken violation, $5 a day, $10 a day, maybe until we get the problem remedied, but certainly not $500. It would have to be something really egregious for us to even consider that in relation to a chicken violation. See, what else? So that concluded the review of the proposed text. Again, I just wanted to emphasize typically where you will see R2 is within that mile and a half of an existing municipality in unincorporated towns such as Harmon, Nelson, Sablet, West Brooklyn, and Compton, and rural subdivisions. A lot of people also may have some confusion as to what your property is zoned. Many people look on their tax bill and they see a term called property tax. It may identify your property as improved residential. That does not guarantee the zoning of your property is residential. We have provided a public link so people can go onto our GIS website now and check your zoning to find out what your property is zoned. And that concludes my testimony.
Okay. Do any members of the commission have any questions for Alice? Well, she's under oath. Does anyone from the gallery have any questions for Alice? Well, she's under oath. Okay.
Please.
Please.
And if you want to make sure the light on the microphone is green.
It's green. Is that working?
Perfect, yep.
So yeah, there's a few questions, just kind of in what you had said. I guess I'm wondering, you know, a lot of people went out and bought property. I'm assuming that before this, there was no difference between R1 and R2 as far as whether or not you're allowed to have chickens, that this would actually be something that now restricts R2 that did not beforehand? And so, is that correct?
That's incorrect.
Incorrect?
Yes. Currently, and for as long as I've known, chickens are not allowed in the R2 District. They are allowed in the R1, though.
Okay, so they never have been before in R2?
No.
This would be something that now allows them
Correct.
to be so, okay.
Yes.
So people have bought property beforehand thinking they could or couldn't do this. I was just wondering how they might be able to change the designation on their property? But if it's very strict as far as the distance from municipality, that's not really something that can be altered?
It's worth a discussion. The best thing I can advise you is to contact me or stop by my office. Let's look up your property, and then we can kind of find out what options are available to you. Without seeing the property, knowing what it's zoned and what the surrounding zones are, it's hard for me to speculate because a lot of that will determine what options are available to you.
Okay. So I was just kind of curious if there would be like some sort of an option for grandfather clause or something like that that would apply, but.
Unfortunately, no, because we didn't currently, since we're not, it wasn't currently allowed, there's no chance to grandfather in. So, no, that's.
Okay. I guess I'd like to make other comments, but not necessarily questions. Should I wait then, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I believe you.
Just wondering, Alice, do you know how many properties are like in R2 versus R1?
I did not get a chance to get that number. I can check with Sammy in GIS to try to. But again, like I stated, where you'll see the most concentration in Lee County, I mean primarily, the majority of unincorporated Lee County is zoned agricultural. But there will be these areas of R2 that are near the municipalities or unincorporated municipalities or rural subdivisions.
Okay. That makes sense. The second part of that is on that link that you said that you guys provided, is that when citizens go to that link, is it pretty clear that it says like R1 or R2, et cetera, on their property?
I think so. Jonathan, are you able to pull up the GIS zoning map? I think it is, but.
Because I pulled one.
We'll make sure that, if we can give them a visual. Yeah, it's now open.
They're pulling up an example for you.
Okay, thanks. That's all the questions I had.
Okay, so this is what your map will look like when you go onto the county's website. As you can see, we got a couple of different, it's kind of hard to see. We got this yellow, which is R2, which you can see, it does designate on the map what the parcel is. Over here, we have Ag, which is shown, but it has no color overlay. The red that you're seeing is a commercial district. The darker yellow is the R4 district. So that is what you're going to see when you pull up the map. It is color-coded. And there is a legend, so. But if anyone has any trouble, any questions, please feel free to reach out to me, and I can walk you through the process or assist you.
Sir? I have a question regarding, as I talked to Alice this morning, regarding the codicils in this particular legislation or law, whatever you want to call it. or law, whatever you want to call it. And, and you've covered the codicil thing for me when we discussed this morning. And I see it's clearly written here, what you told me.
Okay.
But if we have a bad actor in our subdivision, which we've had in the past, can I still come to you for help after this legislation to try to get something done?
You would not. I can only enforce the code of the county. I cannot enforce subdivision covenants. Those are to be enforced by the subdivision or the, the members of that subdivision themselves. So if this were to pass in a subdivision, I can't stop them from having chickens, but you guys would be able to bring possible litigation against that person for not complying with the subdivision.
Would it take the whole subdivision to do that or just one person in subdivision?
I'm not an attorney, so I, I'm not sure. I have heard that it can be one person or a group of people, but you would really need to consult with an attorney about the proper procedure for that.
Okay. That's going to make it kind of sticky for people in a subdivision who have codicils, especially when they're next to your next door. Okay. Anything we can put in here that will allow you to help? Any 11 or 12 or anything like that?
Not that I know of. Again, we, we don't want to supersede what, what covenants subdivisions have in place. That's why we added the language that we did. Covenants allow subdivisions to be more restrictive. It might tell the people what kind of house they can build, you know, what kind of materials, no farm animals. But it's up to that group then to enforce those rules and the county stays out of that. So at that point, it becomes civil. So if this, if this were to go into, if this were enacted, your bad actor would be able to have chickens legally under the county code. However, he or she may be subject to litigation by his or her neighbors for not being in compliance with the covenants.
Well, in our particular situation, our subdivision is not like Lost Nations where they have a governing board and charge fees and stuff like that. It's, you know, we're just all individuals. So I think that's going to be kind of complicated for that issue to be resolved and still try to keep, you know, living next to people who are bad actors. That's why I ask if there's anything to be added.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks for the time this morning, too.
No problem.
Recognize.
First off, thank, first off, thank you. I'm humbly before you seeking wisdom and knowledge. And I have a theoretical question. By the way, I like your beard.
Thank you.
I can't grow one.
Are these questions in factual nature or are they theoretical pondering?
No, I, I don't know at this point.
All right, we'll sort it out.
I want to be like my wife's beautician. I want to start raising chickens. Your rules are simple, fencing, steel enclosure, all that is in compliance. The thing I have the question is, I have six, let's say I have the six chickens. And after three or four years, they get old. And then I want to get six new babies. Do I have to, do I, at the same time, do I have to kill my old chickens before I can bring the new ones in? Would I be out of compliance? Because I, at one point, if you get the little ones and the big ones, you've got 12 chickens in one time. So my thought is, where would we stand there?
Based on the way the text is written, you would not be in compliance if you had six adults and six babies on the property, as that would be 12 chickens.
Yeah, well, I.
So, not saying that you would have to kill them or anything of that nature, but you would have to find a way to, to limit that number to six.
Well, I could probably give them away. So that was, I know it's kind of a stupid question, but it just, I'm sitting here thinking what you have here. And I thought, I, I don't want to, I'm retired law enforcement. I don't want to break the law. I lived with that for 19 years of my life. So just a simple question. And I think you've got it figured out, so I appreciate the time. Thank you.
It was a good question. Recognize.
Hey, Ben. There's a lady in that far corner that's.
Good evening. I, I've raised chickens my whole life since I was seven years old when I moved out of town to Dixon outside of Amboy. I am currently Ag resident. I have fear that your limit of six chickens will not feed a family of four. If you think about somebody that has two grown kids, nuclear family, if you will, an adult male that works 40 hours a week in a factory, six eggs a day at most from six chickens on the best days is not going to feed them breakfast every day.
Is there a question for Alice?
No, I'm, I'm.
Okay, we're not in the.
Well, I'm trying to get to where they're coming with the six.
Okay, but we're not in the public comment section?
Gotcha.
There, there's time for that. She's still under oath. She's answering and providing testimony at the moment on the record. Anyone else? Sir? Sir? I recognized her first. And then we'll get to you.
Hi.
Hi. I'm Shanda Hurst. I live in Natchusa. I have a question. I'm hoping that this is good to be directed towards you at this time. I have lived where I've, where I'm at for almost 40 years. So my question is, I know when we moved there, we were not anyway residential. And I looked at it and like across the street, they're not. But I am now. To what they said, is there a way I can go back to not being? Because I don't even know when it happened.
Yes. Again, if you can contact me tomorrow or even after the meeting, I can get your, your number. And I can look at your property and try to find out when that zoning was changed. We should have a history, a record of that.
Yeah, because I tried to look it up myself and I couldn't find it.
Yes. It's probably not on a public website. I'll have to dig through some boxes of papers, but we can, we can figure that out.
Is Natchusa is unincorporated.
Correct.
And we are five miles from Dixon and we don't have any of the facilities. So, yeah. So contact you to see about getting that switched if we can.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Couple of questions. Is there going to be permit and/or fee for people to have the chickens?
No, there is no permit or fee that would be required.
Okay. What about the structure or the fence?
The fence would require, and the structure would too, if it's over 200 square feet.
Okay. Now, the next question I have is about, I know you said you have no idea how many R2 properties are in the county. But based off of that, do you have an estimate? Was it 1%? Was it half a percent that was inquiring about this to be changed or added?
I, I couldn't even put a percentage. I just know that we've gotten a number of phone calls over the years. So, I mean, in looking at the government process, this is kind of how it works. We throw an idea out there and kind of see, you know, if there is support or not support.
So if there's a concentrated area of, say, 185 R2 and two want to have it changed, the 183 don't have a say? You're basing off of 100 or two out of 185? Or whatever, that's what I'm saying.
I don't, I don't think I'm following.
So you had a few people that want to do this, correct?
Right, so.
What's the percentage of people that are going to be affected by it that may not want the chickens? That's why I'm kind of curious.
I, I don't have a, I can't quantify that for you, but it would impact anyone across Lee County that has R2 zoning.
So what can they do if they do not want them?
So this is, I mean, essentially, this board is holding the, the public hearing.
Sure.
So we're trying to find out how the public feels about this issue. This board will then take those comments and they'll pass it on to the county board potentially at some point for a vote, either for or against. So then it will be up to the county board to sort through the comments of the public to determine what, what is the best course for the county.
So people that aren't in favor of this needs to contact your office?
They can. They, they should be here tonight to speak out against it.
Well, you have to remember it was relatively quickly that this came out. And understanding that, you know, a lot of people didn't know that they were, be affected by this.
Notice of this public hearing was published on, on March 15th.
Okay.
So.
Okay, yes.
Good evening. I'm Patricia Austin. I've lived here my entire life. I was born and brought home, short statement, 1974, to the home that I'm living in currently. My question is, the property itself has always been a commercial property. It wasn't until recently that I even heard anything about R1 or R2. My question is, when did they decide that people that live outside of city limits are now deemed as R1, R2? Like, when did my commercial status? When was the ordinance made? I guess the question is, when was the ordinance from R1 and R2 developed? When did that come about?
So that code was adopted by the county in 2005. However, the zoning is based on the comprehensive plan of the county. So a comprehensive plan is, kind of sets forth that, how the county wants to develop and grow. So the goals of Lee County are to preserve the agricultural qualities of, of the county, preserve the egg, egg economy and the agricultural lifestyle. So that's why the, we, we try to discourage residential development, except in the mile and a half around existing cities. It, it kind of tells us how, how we, how we are going to develop certain areas. So without knowing what your property is, I, I would have to go back to see if it was involved in like a remapping or something. I would have to go back and research when that was changed. But, but property zoning can't just change like that. It, it involves a hearing, a public hearing.
But you said 2005?
Is when the zoning, the revised zoning ordinance was adopted?
Okay, well, you answered my question there.
Okay.
My next question is, it's kind of a broad spectrum, but in the mindset of raising chickens and how often a family eats chicken per week, even if you go buy it at the store, you don't eat only six chickens in a year. The number should be modified. I know that's opinion, but in the perspective of a question, when will a decision be made on the actual number if a person residing in the R2 district, and they're not in any nuisance to the neighbors, no complaints? What, what is the stating of keeping it to six chickens? Whereas, like he was rephrasing earlier, the six eggs a day wouldn't feed a family. Six chickens isn't going to feed a family for a year. What are the, what are the options in reflecting to change that number?
So the, the goal of this ordinance is not to make it so a family can sustain itself on chicken alone, but it is so that if they want to have a hobby chicken, maybe use the eggs for themselves, raise them as meat chickens, that they would be able to do so. We have the agricultural district, which is where you're allowed to have as many chickens as you want. And the reason that you're not allowed to have chickens currently in the R2 district is because of the nuisance factors. So we were trying to bridge the gap between people that are interested in having the, the chickens in residential areas and those that can only have them in, out in the Ag district. So that's where we got the number. We're, we're definitely not trying to make it so a family can sustain itself off of these chickens alone. But it is an option that would allow them to have them if they chose to do so.
Okay. So there's no possibility that the number can be changed? You guys are dead set that this six is going to be the what sticks?
I, I'm not, I, I don't vote on this. If this board were to direct further discussion by my office, we could take it back to reexamine.
But it was the zoning office that wrote this petition in the first place, correct?
We filed the petition, correct.
So you were the ones that came up with the six, right?
Yes, based off of what was proposed through the city of Dixon.
Okay. All right. I think that answers everything so far. Thank you.
Yes.
What are the current penalties for owning chickens?
If you have chickens in the R2, you would be required to remove the chickens within a certain timeframe. And if you didn't, then we would look to implement a fine.
But there's no set fine, like there is in this amendment?
No, this, this amendment doesn't even include a set fine. It, it's a variable, up to $500 a day. So it's based on the discretion of, of my office. And like I said, if it's a, if it's a violation that requires, you know, site visits and reports or follow-up letters, and there is a lot of time incurred by my office to remedy that violation, the fine would be in line with what, what expenses are incurred by my office to remediate the violation. So it's not really, we're, we're not trying to make a profit off of fines. If this were to pass, I'm not going to go out and start patrolling properties and counting chickens. We would rely on the public to notify us. If there is a problem, then we would come out and determine whether they're in compliance with the code or not. If they're not, then they would be subject to the penalties.
Okay. And then the next question that I have, and I think I'm probably not the only one here with this question. Hopefully, if I am, then that's fine. What is this process? Like, I know we're holding a public hearing, but what happens when all of these people tell you, we want more than six chickens? Because six chickens is a very low number of chickens. So what happens when we communicate that to you or someone communicates to you that we don't want R2s to have chickens? Where do we go from there? What, what is, what does this process look like? How many public hearings are there? Can, can you walk us through that process, please?
Yes. So when we file a petition, according to statute, we have to give notice of that petition a minimum of 15 days prior to. And we hold a public hearing on that petition. So therefore, we have presented this document tonight. This is what is being considered. If this board decided that, you know, maybe the zoning office needs to consider factor X, they could direct me to take that back to consider whatever factor it is that they, they feel needs to be addressed. So they could do that additionally. They could send it to the county board with, you know, a recommendation that they approve it so long as there's, they allow for eight chickens instead of six. So essentially, if this board were to direct me to change this document, say, tonight, they made a motion and said, hey, we want to send this back to the zoning office. We want them to reconsider the number of chickens. This would have to be redrafted and another public hearing would have to be held on the new text. So that's how, that's what determines the number of public hearings.
Okay.
Tonight, the goal is to have everyone heard. If we were not able to finish that tonight, we would continue on to another evening to, again, allow the public to be heard and finish that portion of the hearing. So that's what kind of determines that.
Yeah, no, you absolutely answered my question through the process. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Sir?
I have one more question.
I have one more question. Um, so if this gets passed, and the municipality passes an ordinance not allowing chickens, is that, is that going to be a conflict between the county and what the municipality has in place?
If the, if the municipality is incorporated, um, and I believe if they have their own zoning code established, and they had established rules that did not permit chickens, this would not supersede their rules. Their rules would be what, what their-
But if they don't have their own zoning, they cannot pass an ordinance?
That is my understanding.
An ordinance cannot be passed, okay?
Any more questions for Alice while she's under oath?
Grace O'Brien, Amboy, and I am Ag. My question is something you already talked about, Alyssa, and that was the grandfathering clause. Is there any possibility that maybe it could be called something else? We have families in R2 who are, they don't have close neighbors. They have beautiful, adorable little setups for their chickens, and they have more than six because they weren't aware of any of this with R2 and ag and stuff. And they've been established that way at their homes, and like I said, they don't have close neighbors, they don't have anybody complaining. Is there anything you can look into to find a way to help those people that were already established?
So their remedy would be to look at a potential rezoning of their property.
Okay.
Um, there, there's nothing we can do to grandfather this in because it wasn't something that was currently allowed. Um, it's illegal now, um, so we can't make a grandfather clause for something that is illegal.
Okay.
Um, so their options would be to rezone potentially. Um, if, for example, say someone did happen to drive by their house and, you know, they want to complain because they think they see a lot of chickens or whatever. You know, we would go out to that landowner and present them with those options. You know, you could remove the chickens, you, you would be a candidate or not a candidate for a rezone. It depends on the property, it depends on the surrounding uses. So those are case-by-case basis, I, I can't, without looking at the specific potential property, I can't really say what would be required.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone from the commission? Okay.
Okay, and before I step down, um, the next portion of this hearing is presentation of evidence by the public. So this would be where if any of you have any factual information that you want to present, you would come up here and take this seat, we would swear you in, you would present your facts, and then you would also have to answer questions from the public. Um, is there anyone that would like to present evidence at this time?
And keep in mind that there is a public comment section after this, where you can state your opinions. So you're not required to.
And if there are none, then I would suggest to move on to that portion of the hearing.
Last chance? Okay. We will open it up for public comment, um, looking for a fair way to do this. That's what I was thinking, we'll start at one end, and since you have your hand up, let's start in this direction around the room. Okay. And, and a reminder, you're not under oath.
My name is Samantha Schaefer. My husband and I own a home in Aldina. Um, for anybody that might not be aware, we're about five miles outside of town. Our property is just under two acres. Our home is also zoned R2. I have multiple concerns with homes zoned R2 and the proposal in front of you. I have concerns for homes zoned in rural Lee County, zoned R2 that have children who participate in 4H and FFA. The proposed does not allow for consideration of property sizes, instead restricting across the board. Our children attend Amboy schools, along with many other families zoned in R2. They have much higher participation in our area for 4H and FFA. As an example, if a family had three children and each child wanted to participate in showing chickens, if each child raised three chicks to find one to meet show standards, you would already be three above your allotted six hens. Keeping in mind that those chickens may not be used or reach the age of laying to provide their food with any, their home with any food. As you could see, this would create a very expensive problem for the homeowner, given the current finding schedule in the proposal. If they had more than three children, or if their child had an interest in showing mini goats, for example, um, that would be even worse. Taking into consideration the amount of property owned versus the number of animals or type of animals allowed, seems like it could be pretty important. Most of Lee County is rural. The Dixon City Ordinance allows for additional animals and types of animals if the property is not smaller than 1.4 acres. If this allowance is provided for in-town homes, it should absolutely be considered for R2 zoned homes. When looking at the proposal, and maybe even using your own experience to consider this, you may look at an in-town subdivision that is zoned R2. While this seems reasonable to do, it doesn't provide a clear picture. Homes outside of Dixon City Limits that, uh, sorry. Homes that are outside of Dixon City Limits that do not receive water or sewer services, and don't fall in that one and a half mile that they use to designate most R2 properties. It seems confusing to lump every community in the area into that. Um, myself and my neighbors are surrounded by ag fields. What you think is suitable for my home with two acres, you might not think is suitable for another home. This is why using home zoning doesn't really tell a full story for everyone's property. In 2019 and during the pandemic of 2020, I had seven people living in my home. Six chickens, even if they laid every day, I would not have even had one egg to provide each person. A family's ability to provide and feed their family in a way that makes sense for them is important. Given the state of our economy and the shortages and inflation that have presented themselves in our community at different times over the last four years, this should be learned from and considered. Because a home has six hens, it doesn't mean they receive, receive six eggs each day. A family of four, for example, might only receive three eggs per day, still not allowing enough food for each person in the house. The finding schedule, although understood to be broad to provide steps for the zoning office for the offense committed, unfortunately leaves a lot of room to be interpreted and used. Not having a specific outline for fines seems to provide for interpretation on the zoning office's part. If two homeowners commit the same offense but are fined in different ways, it could also open a place for litigation to occur. I believe every family should have the right to have fowl to feed their family, while being mindful of their neighbors. I believe what is being proposed was planned with the benefit of the community at heart, but is short-sighted, essentially attempting to fit a square peg in a round hole, potentially restricting and requiring families to apply individually for special considerations for their properties, which will not only be time-consuming for the zoning office, but expensive for the homeowner. I would like to see this proposal come back in front of the board for consideration with adjustments made. Allowing it to work for the community that it's going to be imposed upon. Restrictions for R2 homes with a 600 square foot backyard should not be the same restrictions imposed on families with considerably more space. I believe we should support the rights for everyone to own poultry. I do not believe we wish to impede on the rights of our community and property owners. I ask that the board decline the proposed item. Instead, that R2 residents be offered the same considerations, if not more than Dixon City residents currently have. That they be open to revisit this proposal only after it's been adjusted to better suit the communities in which it's being written for, as well as much more structured finding guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you. Kind of keep doing the wave around the room here. Just raise your hand as I'm kind of coming by you. Sir?
I would also like to recommend the board, uh, re proposes this for more than six chickens, as I tried stating before, six eggs is not going to feed people. Um, COVID didn't cause people to go out and buy hobby chickens or accessory birds. They were there to feed our families when you could not buy toilet paper at Walmart, when the supply chain failed us because everything was in such shortage. People wanted poultry and waterfowl and whatever else to feed themselves. They were, they had to become self-sufficient because we could not rely on the stores. Uh, I was raised that way to feed, to fend for myself, I hunt my own meat, I buy from a local butcher, I don't buy from the store because it's unreliable, it's not safe, you don't know what you're getting in the food you get from the store anymore. And I think a lot of people in this room will agree with me that raising chickens is more than hobbies, that we just want to be self-sufficient. Thank you.
I'm sorry, could I get your name for the record? Thank you.
Sir?
My name is Kent Miller. Um, I guess I just had a couple of comments I would like to recommend to you, that this is something that doesn't end tonight, but that it would have some changes, and I, I really thank you for looking into this and for acknowledging that there is a need, and I understand that it is sensitive, there, there are people who can go to extremes, and we want to be able to protect everybody with this. Um, I, I just recently moved out in the country, not more than a decade ago. Um, part of the reason was, is to be able to provide some of our, our food for our family. Um, but where I lived at in town, uh, in Dixon, City Limits, it might be interesting to know that, uh, that property was actually the city commons. There wasn't a house built there because that's where, if you had a cow in town, you could come and stake your cow out there, so they could have enough grass to eat. And apparently there were other places like that around town at one time, and I understand that that was something that was heavily encouraged during World War II. Um, but yeah, now, now we're out in the country. I, I have done birds, we've done the 4H, we've showed the birds and, and had a, you know, quality line of, of birds that we've done. Um, so I, I have gone around the various shows, I, I don't know precisely what the Lee County ordinance has said, I've looked into it at a time, I, I couldn't find it before coming here, but, um, I can tell you pretty much what all the counties are dealing with. And that is that, um, we don't have a chicken industry at all in this state anymore. There's, uh, basically the Amish Mennonite south of Tamco is the only significant poultry that we have in the entire state, and it's, it's, uh, it's amazing compared to what's around us with the other states and what's possible. Um, we already cannot do, uh, uh, you know, farming of the chickens unless you're zoned ag. Um, but this comes into, you know, the previous language that was here for our county, and you're going to find this in every county, is that there's, uh, language about what is considered a farm animal. And, uh, there's also language that would be considered for something like pets. So if you're wondering where these numbers like six or seven animals come from, it's usually because if you're having, you know, uh, several dogs, you're going to be a puppy mill if you go beyond a certain number of a breed. So that's often where they come up with these numbers from. Um, you know, that can lead to other problems, which this language in here does seem to address, where you can have, you know, six chickens, six ducks, six guineas, you know, things like that, which obviously this bill doesn't allow for that, but, um, that, that is one of the problems that it caused in the past. Um, but this is something that's going to be limited for the number that you can have. So the other language was basically like if you have a farm animal. And people, obviously in Lee County, they've been getting away with having chickens, and I, I know that the, the board would not recognize this argument, um, for legal reasons, but when these things were pressed, what people often do is they would fall back and say, "Okay, these are, um, my pets, these are for a hobby purpose, or these are for my own personal consumption, we're not farming these animals, they're for ourselves." Um, and if it really was a problem and you had neighbors complaining, the issue could be pressed, and there's enough ambiguity, ambiguity, ambiguity- what am I? Um, ambiguity in, ambiguity in the language that you could press it as a farm animal if it's a problem or something like that. It might be good that we keep that, but obviously going forward, it would be nice if we had things that were more precise in the language. Um, the lady brought up the comment about the number of acres. Um, there's, you know, obviously meat birds that don't crow at all, and they're slaughtered at, you know, eight to 10 weeks old, and they're not even a problem with crowing. So with feeding, there might be some things that can be done with that. There could be, you know, other, other restrictions where you wouldn't have to go just, you know, all or nothing with it. Um, but we, we are in a, in a time of food insecurity right now. Uh, there's a lot of things happening to farmers all over in Western cultures right now. So I, I do think this is something we do need to get right, and I do appreciate that you're looking into this, but, um, I do have more information if you want more on those issues, because I have been involved in the poultry industry for some time, so, um, I'd be happy to talk to you if you want more.
Thank you. Sir?
So I, I do suggest that the board consider, like the lady said, maybe look at size. R2 covers a lot of properties, different sizes and whatever. Um, when you're a highly dense, densely populated area where residential, 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 one right after another, they're greatly impacted. But if it's a bigger lot where the neighbors aren't close, um, that would be more allowable, in my opinion, because the neighbors wouldn't have a problem probably with it. So I would, I would consider the board looking at maybe revising, it could be R2, but a size limit on it, that you can put this in place on. That was my comment.
Can I hear your name?
John Stenzel.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maura Harrison. Um, I really like what you said about the acreage, I thought that was really smart. I live on a four-acre lot, um, out, off of Route 2 on Lost Nation Road, I have three neighbors. Um, I hope I'm not going to get in trouble for this, but I have chickens. Um, and they've never been a bother to anybody. I know no one has talked about roosters, but I would like to talk about roosters and the impact that they have on their hens. Um, they protect their girls, and that's why you have them. I know you guys, um, have an amendment in there for fencing in your birds. Um, also, no one has talked about the health of their chickens. Um, if I go to the store right now and buy eggs that are as good as the eggs that I get from my chickens, I'm going to pay $10, $12 a dozen for these eggs. I feed them organic, they're pasture-raised, so they get the grubs, they get the grass, they get the weeds, and they're very healthy chickens, they're happy chickens, and I think that's really valuable as well, in knowing where your food is coming from, as I think someone had mentioned. Um, I know my girls are healthy, and I know they're happy, and that means a lot to me, and I think it means a lot to most chicken owners. Um, but fencing them in is going to limit what they can forage. And foraging chickens are happy chickens, and I know you guys aren't trying to let us sustain our families on chickens, um, but if I, again, if I go to the store, I'm going to spend $12, at least $12 a week to, to feed four adults' eggs. And that adds up a lot, and it's cheaper for me to keep chickens and just have my own eggs. Um, and they're not going to be as healthy if, if they can't forage, and 10 chickens, I don't know if you guys own any chickens, probably not, because it's against the rules, but, um, they tear up land really quickly, and they, they are better at tilling the ground for a garden than a tiller that you rent at Ace. Um, they compost for your garden, they tear up the weeds for you, they eat nettles, they eat poison ivy, they eat everything. So if you- So if you need weeds taken care of, just get some chickens too, you know? They take care of everything. And so fencing them in and limiting roosters and limiting chickens is going to have a financial impact on families as well. And we have dogs in the neighborhood that aren't controlled, and they come and attack my chickens sometimes. And so I understand the fencing as a protection for the chickens and as a protection for the neighbors, but that's what roosters are for as well. So I think not only should you guys reconsider the number of chickens that a family can have, but also the roosters, the fencing, most of it. And if you do decide that six chickens is the limit and you can't have roosters and you have to have them fenced in and all of the other clauses that are in this amendment, I would please ask that you detail it out very clearly how to go about getting our properties rezoned. Because if that's going to be your decision, I think your constituents would like a way around that, a workaround. Because I don't want to give up my chickens. I know most people don't want to give up their chickens. And again, my chickens bring me joy, and they also bring me financial savings. So in addition to what everyone else has said, I do believe that it should be reconsidered on all fronts. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. I think we had one.
Hello, I'm Doug Gervis from Sablet, Village of Sablet, is where I live. I've moved there about 40 years ago. I come from the farm. I lived on the farm about 30 years. So I know all about farming and farm animals. I've worked with farm animals all my life with, doing electrical work around the country. But my neighbor happens to be a neighbor that wants to have chickens. And this is a neighbor that has got about a 20-year siding project going on. They mow their grass when it's about a foot high. And I just know how they're going to take care of their chickens. I'm going to say in the years past, I've had neighbors that I probably would have no problem having chickens for the fact that they take care of their, their houses, their property. Everything's mowed up nice all the time. But I just feel I know I'm going to have problems with this neighbor. I border, actually, I farm the field right behind my house. I am zoned R2. I'm right on Main Street in Sablet. And I just feel that we don't need the chickens in town. We moved to town to get away from that stuff. As far as the six chickens increasing to 12 chickens, I can't see that in town. If you want to have 12 chickens or more chickens, you move out in the agriculture area. If you're going to raise six chickens to feed your family, you can go and buy the eggs, you can buy the chickens cheaper than you can buy the feed. I guess that's my feeling of chickens. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
My comments, again, it's Patricia Austin, as pertaining to the cost to feed currently is $28 and some odd cents for a bag. I only have a few chickens, but still I would like the ability to be able to grow, raise my own meat, 25 a year maybe, I don't know. As far as a batch of chicken, that's not even one chicken a week for my family. I'm just saying, as far as the cost to go and buy organic fed chicken, you're looking at like, what was it? I think it was 29 or to $32 to buy a chicken at the farmer's market from the Amish community that was organically raised. So that one chicken, I can raise it up eight to 10 weeks, slaughter it myself, because why would I pay the processing? I'm just really disgusted with this. The fact that when you're outside of city limits, there shouldn't be ordinances that tell people what they can do on their property that they pay taxes for. I may be rambling, but I'm, I'm really upset. I'm hoping I'm making sense as far as what I'm trying to put across that the cost to go buy chickens is not equivalent to what the feed cost is. And the fact that to find someone for trying to supply food for their family when otherwise may not be able to. I think a lot of changes need to be made to this to reflect not just only the ability to have more than six chickens, but also to look at the ability to have chickens where you want. It shouldn't be the city saying that you can't have chickens. There's, there's got to be a happy medium. I see where the city is saying that there's got to be some limit, but there's got to be a happy medium for people to be able to feed their families too. I thank you for your time and I have a good evening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, she had to hear us again. Just want to kind of reiterate that I think where maybe there is some problems going on, and thankfully Alice Ingle has said that we could come and talk to her and possibly get some of those taken care of, is that some of us didn't even realize, because we are out in the rural areas, and like I said, I've had my home for almost 40 years, I was not residential when I purchased my home. Clearly that changed somewhere that I was not aware of. And I think some other people probably had their self zoned into these residentials where I'm hearing about. So maybe some way that we can kind of look into that and get some of the zoning changed. And I understand within city limits that there has to be some rules, like they said, where you're compacted. But the majority of us, I think that we're having, we didn't even know that we were zoned differently. We were county. When I had asked before, which granted, this was years ago, I was under rule. I didn't have to abide by Dixon because I'm not in Dixon. I'm five miles out of town. I'm right next to a cornfield. Actually, that's about all that is next to me. And all our houses are not right next to each other. So I understand having to have some rules when you're in a compacted area, but I don't believe that all of the people that are zoned R2 actually fall under that and should be zoned R2. So I think we're having some issues with both, with both ways, how many you can have and also the zoning and where people are at. Because, yeah, I grew up in Dixon and I didn't have any neighbors that had four acres. I didn't have any neighbors that even had more than half an acre. We were right next to each other. And the people behind me actually did have chickens in town. So I guess those are my comments that I think, like she said, that I think there needs to be a way to like possibly rezone some people that shouldn't be zoned the way they are. And pardon? Yeah, without a fee because that, yeah, that would be nice because clearly a bunch of us didn't even know that we were zoned that way. And then yes, as they also stated, to have more intricacies and, yeah, what she said. That's, can't talk very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Going once? Twice? Word up? Okay. Now that the sworn testimony and the public comment portion of the agenda is concluded, it's now on us. Are there any motions you'd like to present? Table the issue for further consideration? Open discussion?
Well, it seemed like many of the comments were more related to zoning than the actual text. And so I don't really know where to proceed from here.
Okay.
I heard a common theme that maybe the R2 zone is just very broad, whereas the ordinance is maybe too specific. And that perhaps where there are very large acreages, maybe we do need to take some more consideration for size. However, I agree with Ellen that it seems like zoning is also a primary issue. Because where people would like to have more ag, maybe those things need to be looked at as well.
Understand. I, I saw two themes. Obviously, a lot of support for self-sufficiency and removing yourself or, you know, localizing your food chain and supply chain. I also happen to see the other thing of what happens when you have bad neighbors. I think as far as some of the people voicing their concerns about having an ordinance in place, allowing for chickens. You know, that's, that's the common theme of communities, is we all have to live together and decide how we're going to live together. So. My opinion is that I think we probably could entertain a motion to table it for now and reconsider. But I'd need to hear that.
I would like to make a motion that we reconsider the ordinance, tabling it for another time. Let me know if I can say that better.
If you can specify the specific parts that we, that you want us to revisit. So if it's the number of chickens or lot size, specify so that we, I can direct my, my group on how, how to proceed. Just revisiting it's a little bit too broad. So what, what do we need to reconsider?
Okay, so in specifics, revisiting number of chickens as it pertains to lot size?
You're not on.
Reconsidering the lot size of R2, is that what you're saying?
No, that there's not even a lot size mentioned at all. I think that that maybe we might need to for some, for some R2 properties that are much, much larger.
So instead of proposing a motion and including that, let's have some open discussion?
Sounds good.
Okay. So we have a lot size as a consideration, possible consideration. Um, quantity.
Alice, do you know if there's a lot size consideration for R2s or I don't recall at all?
Not specific to chickens. Currently, the minimum lot size required for the R2 district is one acre.
Thank you.
However, there are R2 properties in Lee County that are less than an acre. However. Yes.
What is the range?
I mean, we have-
Are we down as far as a quarter acre or are we?
I think probably in some areas. It just depends on subdivision. You know, we have some parcels that were zoned ag that were in violation, that the remedy was to make them a rural subdivision. So there would be some situations like that that might not meet the, the base requirements. However, they would need a variance if they did not, based on our current code. So.
And then we're also talking about unincorporated, or unincorporated.
Correct.
You could be much smaller.
Yes.
Okay.
Now to clarify on quantity and lot size, are you saying those would be correlated? So you would have to have a specific sized lot in order to have the chickens or having a certain sized lot? What was your thought process?
Yes. And I think just because they're, in talking through this and hearing some of the comments, it looked like that R2 definition in size is very broad and that maybe we need to narrow. Obviously, if you have a very small lot size, six chickens is probably very appropriate, but maybe a four acre lot size, six chickens. You know?
I see what you're saying, but wouldn't that be hard to administer?
I think that's where we come to the reality of administration. If you're being a good neighbor, no one's probably going to seek assistance at the zoning office for enforcement. I mean, I, I think we've heard from people in the galley that have said they didn't know they weren't allowed chickens in an R2. They have chickens in an R2. Don't worry, I don't remember your names.
Is, how often does the zoning office receive complaints from people about chickens?
I know that we have one consistent issue involving chickens over the last couple of years that had to do with the chickens not being enclosed and them destroying property of the neighbors. Beyond that, I can't recall any other situations.
So we're back to the good neighbor issue, where if you're being a good neighbor, you're probably doing okay.
On the setbacks. Proposed- Sure. Yeah, sure. On the setbacks, your, your proposed, the proposed ordinance is 15 feet from the property line. And county standard is seven?
For the R2 district.
Yes. And that's for any structure or fence or?
Not fence. Fencing can go up to the property line for side and rear lot lines in the R2. In front yards, setback for a fence is two feet.
Okay. I think there could definitely be some discussion about setback from neighboring residences. You know, I think we can all agree that it's a broad district and properties vary, where some are built on the line and might be very close to their neighbor's chickens, where others are going to be far apart from their neighbor's chickens.
So in addition to the property line setbacks, you're suggesting to look into a setback from adjacent neighbor residents?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Am I allowed to ask a question, even though I didn't ask it earlier while she was under oath?
Is it a question that needs to be under oath?
It might be a silly question.
Alice, are you willing to go back under oath?
Do you, do I need to go under oath?
I don't know.
I can't.
What is the, other than the obvious objection to roosters chasing people and being loud, are there any other objections?
No.
Or reasons for the omission of roosters?
The noise is the biggest issue, or concern, I should say. Having been chased by a rooster or two, that is a valid concern as well.
They're aggressive, or can be, and loud. So we've discussed lot size as an obvious consideration, quantity of chickens as a consideration, proximity to neighboring residents and property line setbacks.
Yes, I agree.
Are those the three main to include in the motion?
Yes, agreed.
Anything else to include in the motion for exploration?
I think you have it covered.
Okay. May I hear a formal motion?
I would like to move that we revisit the subjects of number of chickens, lot size, residential setbacks in the ordinance.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, so what that will mean then is it will be sent back to my office. You have made your instructions clear, so we will revisit those specific issues. We will plan to come back in a month. Let me check what that will be. The next regular meeting of the Planning Commission is scheduled for May 6 at 6:30 PM. So we will resume this discussion at that time.
Okay. Maybe to give people an expectation of the next one, that will be just a review of the proposed ordinance. We're not going to have a-
Correct. We will allow public comment on any revisions that are made. But essentially, we'll be coming back to review what you directed my office to reconsider. Yes, I can arrange to get that onto the website when it's available. Looks like under the zoning website, there is a planning tab. So I will look to put this information under the planning tab on the Lee County website under the zoning department. However, if you have any questions, you can call the office and I'll get you to it if we have it available. Motion to adjourn?
Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.